Thank you. Is there a way we can turn off the lights so people can see this, please? I appreciate that, Ms. Malone. Thank you, Ms. Malone. On March first, 2022, at the one hour thirty-five minute mark of the last meeting, Leanne LaBaron, Councilmember Leanne LaBaron, excuse me, asked Kristen Stanky if by granting the appeal, the city council will be violating their own ordinance, 2018-450. For those who might need some help with 2000 ordinance number 2018-450, I'll read it. I'll be a portion of it to help council understand the data and the facts. Whereas should a conflicting land use or land use application occur that affect the granting of the early separation binding period, permit, excuse me, the order of the application dictates the decision, such that whatever land use, land use application or early separation binding application occurs first is given the first consideration. So that means that whether the mayor's old bodyguard wants to close a strip club down or not, that means the first application which Pickaxe Holdings has, that means the first early separation finding which Pickaxe Holdings has, is first, receives the first consideration. So although I can appreciate that council or some on council may like to close a strip club, that is irrelevant, based off of ordinance 2018-450, which many of you on this council tonight voted in favor of. It's your resolution, it's your rule, it's your law. Now, Ms. Gina Austin, my former attorney, she may not like the rule, she may not like the law, but we all as applicants have the same law and the same rule to deal with. And so if she wants to go do a citizens initiative to change the law, her, her clients, she has a right. But as of right now, the data and facts say that you guys must deny the appeal and uphold the minor use permit, number 210-007. According to Ms. Stanky, if you were to grant the appeal, it means the findings that were made by the community development directors were not properly made, and so you can grant the appeal so as long as you don't make those findings. Again, I'd like to remind council, the data and the facts is these findings have been made three times by three different community service development managers or people of staff, not just Mr. Bill Chupick, also Noah Alvey, including David DeVries. These findings have been made. Again, according to the city attorney, whose job it is to give you all legal advice, the only way you can uphold the appeal and deny the minor use permit is if the findings cannot be made. So what are the findings? Findings: Conditional use permit may be approved if all of the following findings are made: One, the use is compatible with the neighborhood or the community. The use is not detrimental to the health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity. Three, the use complies with performance standards according to section seventeen dot twenty-four dot zero eight zero. Four, the use is consistent with applicable provisions of a particular zoning district and with policies and standards of the general plan. Eighty-two eighty meets all of these findings, and these findings have been made by three separate community development service directors or managers or persons of staff, three different occasions. Again, according to the city attorney, the only way that you guys can uphold the appeal and deny the MUP is if these findings cannot be made. January eighteenth, 2022, the community development manager hereby approves the minor use permit, number MUP two zero zero dash zero 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 seven, granting eighty-two eighty broadway a finding sufficient separation required by seventeen thirty-two eighty. These are the words of your own staff. These are the findings that's your staff made. These are the findings that you entrust your staff to be able to uphold the rules and finding these findings, and they were made on January eighteenth, 2022. They're also made previous, twice beforehand, again, by your community service development manager. These are not a mistake. These are the findings, and these findings are made, should be made, and the approval for the minor use permit should be allowed to move forward. The community development manager's decision is based on the following findings and determination. Again, these are the words of Mr. Bill Chupick. One, that the use is compatible with the neighborhood or the community. So again, I'd like to remind council, based off your ordinance, 2018 slash four fifty, as well as the findings that Mr. Bill Chupick has made himself, the use is compatible, compatible with the neighborhood. Number two, again, these are the findings that must be made, and these are the findings that you would have to find wrong in order to uphold the appeal and deny the minor use permit. The use is not detrimental to the health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of persons residing, working in or working in the vicinity. Not trying to be redundant, just trying to make my point clear that these findings were made by your community service development manager prior to the appeal, and this is the only way, according to your city attorney, that you guys can uphold the appeal and deny the minor use permit. Again, I hope this is not personal, and we look at the data and facts as the mayor assured everybody behind me she would, and the findings are clear, have been made multiple times by multiple community service development departments. I don't need an attorney to read these findings. I don't think you guys will have to be or act confused with the findings. These are the findings made by your staff who you entrust with the city's business. Number three, the use complies with performance standards according to section seventeen twenty-four zero eighty. Again, these are the words of the community service development manager. These are the findings that must be made, and the community service development manager has made the findings and says the use complies. Number four, the use is consistent with applicable provisions of a particular zoning district and with policy and standards of the general plan. These are the findings that must be made, and I'd like to, again, reiterate it, there's only four findings. The use is compatible with the neighborhood of the community. Mr. Bill Chupick said the use is compatible. Number two, the use is not detrimental to the health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of persons residing or working within the vicinity. According to Bill Chupick, the use is not detrimental. Number three, the use complies with performance standards according to section seventeen twenty-four zero eighty. As Mr. Bill Chupick stated in his findings, the use does comply with performance standards according to section seventeen twenty-four eighty. And number four, the use is consistent with the applicable provisions of a particular zoning district and with policies and standards of the general plan. Again, Mr. Bill Chupick himself said the use is consistent. I'm not going to bore council because I believe this decision is a simple one, based off of the resolutions that just about every single one of you up here voted on yourselves, ordinance 2018 slash four fifty. But I would like, if you don't mind, to go to that, Ms. Audrey. Excuse me, Ms. Malone. Again, this is ordinance number twenty-eighteen four fifty. Mrs. Vasquez voted yes on this. Mr. Jerry Jones voted yes on this. Mrs. Jennifer Mendoza voted yes on this. These are the three senior council members. I don't believe the two on my left have had the opportunity, but this is still the rule, this is still the law, unless that was changed within the last few weeks, this is what we must go by. Whereas, again, just a reminder, should conflicting land uses or land use applications occur that affect the granting of the early separation binding permit, that is what we are here for tonight. MUP is an early separation finding permit. The order of the application dictates the decision. It's simple. Such that whichever land use, land use application or early separation binding application occurs first is given the first consideration. Mrs. Gina Austin came and pointed her pen this way, pointed her pen that way, talked about the rules here, what the rules could be, and how she'd like to change them, that's irrelevant. This is the rule that you guys voted on. This is the data, and this is the fact that Ms. Vasquez likes to make her decisions on, and it's right here. On December sixth, our Pickaxe Holdings application was first. As Ms. Gina Austin stated, hers was turned in December ninth. Not hard to realize, December sixth, coming before December ninth, we deserve the first consideration, according to the rules and the laws that you three enacted. I'm gonna share a timeline with the audience. On November sixteenth, 2021, Pickaxe applied for the minor use permit prior to its expiration date of January twelfth, 2022. On November twenty-sixth, 2021, site plans were turned in to Limbey Grove staff for Pickaxe Holdings to Noah Alvey. On December sixth, 2021, Pickaxe Holdings turned a full CUP package into the city of Limbey Grove, Mr. Noah Alvey, before he left. According to Mrs. Gina Austin, on December ninth, 2021, eighty-two ninety turned in their CUP application, the land use application. That land use application came after the land use application of Pickaxe, which was three days prior, and it deserves its first consideration. January twenty-seventh, 2022, the community development manager published a notice of a decision to again approve Pickaxe MUP two one zero 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 seven, stating that the findings were made. Those findings were made. On March twenty-first, 2022, Pickaxe Holdings receives a notice of complete of our conditional use permit application. Thank you, Mr. Bill Chupick, for taking your time. I know that you are understaffed over there, and I do appreciate you getting the notice of complete, that's been the first notice of complete that fast in the four and a half years that I applied, and I appreciate your work there. Again, first consideration, I turned in the application first, I turned in the early separation findings first. Every single finding was made by your development staff. Anything that Ms. Gina Austin or the appellants are putting forth is irrelevant. Unless they can state that the findings are false, unless they can state that the findings were made wrong three times over, there is really not much to debate. Whether you like me personally or not, we're just going off of the data and the facts as Ms. the mayor states, which I believe is the right way to do it. Again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on stuff because I feel like we all have things better to do. I understand that the appellants want to open a dispensary. Some of them have business with well rings, that is their right, they can file whatever they want to file. It is the job of the city council to follow the data and the facts and to follow its own rules and its own ordinances, which ordinance 2018-450 clearly states what the decision should be. I would also like to state that tonight, I'm proud to say that there are a lot of black organizations speaking up for the mayor. That is their right, proud that they're doing it. Also, I'd like to say, Rick, very big of you to get up here and apologize, you know, we've had a conversation, and I really appreciate that apology, and I hope the mayor forgives you. What I will say to the members of the black community behind me is that less than two percent of these dispensaries nationwide are owned by people that look like me. Less than two percent. And I have not gotten one, not one ounce of help. Matter of fact, I have sent council an email stating the type of behavior that I have gotten in trying to open up a dispensary in the city of Limbey Grove. The type of behavior that has, for whatever reason, stalled, denied, which I believe is wrong, wrongfully, so I don't just sue to just sue. The mayor's bodyguard has the right to say whatever he wants to say, but that's flat out wrong. I sue when I am being cheated, because that is my right as a citizen to sue when I feel like I have been being cheated. I have better things to do with my time and money than to sue Limbey Grove, but best in belief for my family and for my community and for the people that come after me and for the people who dream to be able to get in this industry that is owned ninety-eight percent by people the exact opposite of me or exact opposite of the communities that I live in, I will fight for them, and if I have to sue, I will sue for them, to pave the way. What I am asking for is a fair shake. I've never asked any one of you for any favors. I don't need favors. What I need is a fair starting line and a fair finish line, not one that continues to move because I am who I am, what I look like, or you don't like me. So I ask the council today to remove themselves from their feelings of me and make a decision based off of the data and the facts. Again, whether you guys want to close a strip club or not is irrelevant, has nothing to do with me. If they wanted to get in an application prior, they should have done that. They should have been first. I was first. And I am praying, I am hoping, that you guys are good stewards with the taxpayers' money, and there is no need to litigate, because the law is clear. The ordinance that you guys brought forth is clear. The timeline is clear. The findings are clear. What I would like to end with is simple. We have a full house, and we have a crowd of many that are here to support the mayor, and I appreciate that support. I ask the mayor and I ask these same individuals to also support others who are out there working their tail off to do better for this community, to pave the way for a school district which is sixteen percent black, for a city that is almost sixty percent black and brown, who have been left out of this cannabis industry and pushed to the side just because many people that are in the power player moves, the ones who make the decision can do that. When you cheat me, you don't just cheat me. You cheat the sixty percent black and brown people here that have to vote for you, that live in this community, that want somebody from their community that actually own these dispensaries. Whatever you guys think about me personally, you cannot take away that I give back to the community that I love, that I do the things that the other dispensaries will not do, have not done. So when you cheat me, you cheat people that look like me. You cheat people who are also aspiring to be into the money-making business of cannabis that is now a legit business. Some of your colleagues have labeled me a weed salesman. Do they label Jeff Bezos a weed salesman? I think not. Do they label the ninety-eight percent of the people who do not look like me weed salesman? The corporations, the billion-dollar industries, the Fortune five hundred companies who have invested in the cannabis industry, is that how they are labeled? I believe not. So when you cheat me, you cheat others that look like me. You don't only cheat me, you're stopping new jobs from creating. The money that you are lacking there for four years for personal vendettas, I could have been contributing to that. My businesses could have been contributing to that. So when you are looking money for money, you look right here for the businesses that have been slowed and stalled, and you guys all have the email, and I ask for Ms. Stanky or whoever is in charge to investigate that email, because that has cost me money, that has cost these taxpayers opportunities, tax revenue, and jobs that I would have been in this community if everyone just followed the rules. That is all I am asking, not for favors. You don't have to like me. I don't even care if you look me in my eyes. All I ask is that you follow the data and the facts, and these are your facts, this is your data that you guys voted on. So I respectfully request that city council deny the appeal and grant the early separation findings for MUP two one zero 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 seven and become a part of the good history, become a part of paving the way for others to get into the industry, not just for one sector or one family or individuals who you like or who will vote for you. It's not about that. It's about the data and it's the facts. I thank you for your time, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you very much. We will implement one round of questions here, and so I'll start with Councilmember LaBaron. Please note that you can ask a maximum of two questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Williams, thank you for the presentation. You've been very clear.
I think I just want to ask, what your, if you feel a need, what your experience at City Hall with Bill Chupick has been recently? I know that I was at City Hall recently, I believe, in late February, early March. Late February, early March, I was at City Hall, and I overheard a conversation that you were having with Mr. Bill Chupick at the front desk. I was nearby, and I heard that conversation in which Mr. Bill Chupick said that the appellants were claiming that their CUP was complete, however, is, in his professional opinion, is not complete. Would you want to speak to anything that was said, if you find it necessary?
Yes. My experience with Mr. Chupick has been pleasant, as it can be. I know that from my experience, I have been six of probably the twenty-four applications, so I have dealt pretty intensely and intimately with City Hall, and I got to say that Mr. Bill Chupick has been a pleasant dealing with. He's been pretty responsive. He, in most instances, has been pretty clear, and I appreciate that. I also know that Mr. Bill Chupick is not the final set. I can tell that pretty clearly, and I hope that Mr. Bill Chupick understands that anything that I have said or any of the information that I've sent was to protect and cover my butt based off of my experience, and also understanding that he has people to answer to, and sometimes that has not been the easiest job for the people in that department. Yes, he did state that the CUP, the appellants, was not complete. They based it off of a permit streamline act, not an actual complete application. I'm definitely thankful and grateful that Mr. Chupick was fair in saying that. He probably didn't have to say it, so I do appreciate him stating that, because I did have concerns that maybe I was trying to get leapfrogged. So I do appreciate Mr. Chupick saying that. Other than that, my experience with Mr. Chupick has been light years, very different than some of my other experience with people in his position. I hope that answered your question. I'm more than willing to go deeper into it, but at this point, I might want to focus on what's ahead of us in the future and not necessarily the past, but I am asking for an investigation into the past to clear my name and make sure that taxpayers understand what is going on, what has taken so long, why does it seem like I'm here, up here so often, and why have I been so loud? I am asking for that investigation because I believe it's the right thing to do, and there should be nothing to hide if everything's on the up and up as everyone states.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And then I know at the March first, city council meeting, when this was first on the agenda, I did ask a very pointed question of our city attorney, and that was whether granting the appeal would be a violation of our own laws, our own ordinances, and in a roundabout way, instead of saying yes, it would, the city attorney essentially said yes, it would. If the city has found the findings, then they would be in violation of our own municipal code, of our own ordinance, number 2018-450, which passed in the year 2019. I actually have the staff report and resolution of that ordinance passing in my hands. So I just want to state that again. Thank you. I think that's it for me right now.
Councilmember Gastel?
I don't have any questions right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
I have a few questions. I'll have a few questions for staff when we get to that point, but I don't have questions for Mr. Williams. Thank you. I think your report was very thorough. I do want to say, I don't personally feel like I've been cheating you, and I've tried to make the most informed decisions that I can, and I promise you that that's what I'll do tonight.
I appreciate that, Ms. Mendoza, and I don't think you have personally made any decisions. You go off of what staff tells you, and that is another reason why I would really appreciate an investigation into what I sent over here, but thank you.
Representative Tim Jones? And I do not have any questions for you at this time. I will do a second round of questions, and if you have comments for Mr. Williams, you can provide those comments as well. And so I'll start with Councilmember LaBaron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any more questions for Mr. Williams. However, I did just want to state, in case people who are in the audience do not stay until the very end, that at the very end of this meeting, I am going to be asking for support of an investigation into allegations of city staff having committed fraud against the individual who stands before us. Thank you. Actually, I want to press the stop by saying-
At this time, we are here to hear this particular item. Please note that that conversation should not take place here at this time, as it is not on the agenda, but also, any claims of fraud, waste, or abuse must be substantiated. And so if there is a claim, please substantiate- And so if there is a claim, please substantiate where the fraud, the waste, or abuse is occurring and how, and that will be taken into consideration.
Councilmembers, we're all sent documentation today with allegations of fraud, and through that documentation, I really strongly believe that we should be investigating that, and I'm gonna talk about that later in the meeting. That's it. I don't intend to talk about it now. Thank you.
Councilmember Gastel?
I don't have any questions now.
Councilmember Mendoza?
No, none.
And Mayor Phil Tim Jones?
No questions.
Thank you so very much. This is the time for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please submit a speaker slip to the clerk. I do have some speaker slips here, and I will move forward with the speaker slips. And so I will start off. So regarding the process for this particular item, we will hear public comment. And after the public comment, we will allow a rebuttal. And that rebuttal will be provided by Gina Austin. And then Chris Williams will have the opportunity to speak again. And then staff will be able to provide comments. And then I will circle around with the elected officials to see if there are any more questions of staff, and then we will close the hearing. So that is the process that is in place. And so I will move forward to public comment. And I'll start with Kathleen McLean, followed by Teresa Rosi at Prophet.
Good evening, council. I wanted to start by reiterating, on March first, twenty twenty-two, at the one hour and thirty-five minute mark, city attorney Chris Stinky stated, "If you grant the appeal, it means the findings that were made by the Lemon Grove Community Development Director were not properly made. And so you can grant those findings of the appeal, so as long as you don't make those findings." I will say, just like you all, right? It was a little confusing when Gina Austin was standing up here and saying "conditional use permit, minor use permit, land use", and over and over, every which way to Sunday. Then it went on to talk about laws that were created, I don't even care how long ago, eighteen hundreds, and how we'd have to go back to the preceding laws to do the laws now. At the end of the day, it was really clear, once I looked at the resolution that you all signed, that the findings had been made three times. Now, she may have been mad that we put in another MUP. It was done as really just an insurance policy. We turned in a full and complete conditional use permit, and it has been deemed complete. She also stated that we didn't have control of the property, and we were waiting for it to be up for rent again, or something along those lines. That's very untrue. The owners of the property wrote a letter. We have control of the property. That's never been an issue. There was a lot, actually. But at the end of the day, I think it's just the fact that I would like you to follow the resolution that you all signed in. We did turn in our conditional use permit before them. The dates don't lie. She admitted it herself. I'm asking council, even though they don't like Chris Williams, I'm requesting that the city council deny the appeal and grant the early separation findings for the MUP at eighty-two eighty. Again, the conditional use permit has been deemed complete. We are ready to move forward. There's really not too much else to say. I am asking that you follow your own laws and your own resolution that you all signed into effect. Thank you.
Thank you. David M.? Followed?
Hello. So, longtime resident here in Saint Lemon Grove, just wanna restate that the church heavily uses those buildings on the right-hand side. And it's primarily used by either minors of all ages, from kindergarten through high school years, and then the evening is also used by young children. So throughout the week, throughout the days, throughout all the hours of the day, the property is being used on that side. And any impact, I would ask that you respect the existing status of protecting our minors and our community. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Teresa Rosi at Prophet, followed by Jessica Herrera.
I come before you again, and I ask, why are you stonewalling Chris Williams yet again? Over five hundred thousand dollars in attorney's fees have been paid, and for you to again target Chris Williams is a crime. Your lack of common sense has cost our city so much, and it has to stop. The minor use permit was approved for eighty-two eighty Broadway according to section seventeen thirty-two zero eight zero. The Lemon Grove Community Development Manager stated that the property met the findings. And why would you go against his findings? Don't grant the appeal. Approve the MUP. Approve the MUP just like the community development manager did, like community development manager did. Stop wasting our taxpayer dollars. This is the data. These are the facts. Uphold the law. Your law. Right this wrong. If Chris Williams was a white businessman, the MUP would have been approved, and the business would have been opened. But because Chris Williams is a black businessman, you target him and make him jump through extra hoops. Right this wrong here and now. Thank you.
Next, we have Jessica Herrera, followed by Tony A. Archer.
Thank you, Mayor Vasquez and city council. I sent you all some documents that I have received that in my opinion show serious fraud happening against Chris Williams of Pickaxe Holdings by the city of Lemon Grove. I became more increasingly concerned about these documents once I read the letter from property owner Doris Madder of the property in question today located at eighty-two sixty and eighty-two eighty Broadway, in which she points out more lies and deceit by the lawyers and the owner of Walgreens. It is, in my opinion, that staff and very possibly some members of council are colluding to commit fraud together against Mr. Williams. I am here to ask you to vote against Walgreens' appeal and grant Mr. Williams his multiple use permit number two ten dash zero zero seven, as should have been done already and on time by the city. I will remind you that these meetings are recorded, and the community is very much paying attention. And just for reference, these documents that I sent you, I think should be considered. I'd like to point out in the property owner's letter-